Grant the order and if you could do roll call, please.
Absolutely. Councilman Sigda?
Here.
Councilwoman Gross?
Here.
Councilman Hartline?
Here.
President Stewart?
Here.
Vice President Yanazi?
Here.
Councilman Sprague?
Here.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Here.
Mayor Reeves?
Here.
Thank you.
So those members of council that are new to the process, the community development block grant applications are due in early January. Typically, our borough engineer will bring forth some recommendations to council on projects that are eligible for community development block grant funding. Ms. Catania, once she provides her presentation of eligible projects at that time, we'll open up discussion and give Ms. Catania direction to move forward with the application process to submit two of those projects that are eligible. So at this time, I'll yield the floor to Ms. Catania to provide a overview of potential community development block grant projects.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I believe council has a copy of my memo dated December the 2nd that is discussing various potential projects for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Application Round. I have a list. That list is not in any order. For those of you who may not know, all of the borough is eligible for community development block grant projects. Those projects may include construction. We've recently done the welcome signs and the signage throughout the borough, this new street name signs. We've done the sanitary sewer rehabilitation project that was just completed from the 2019 program. And we're currently working, as a matter of fact, today, received the ERR impact approval from OHCD to get that process started, get that project out for design and bid. Some of the projects that we've discussed in the past, such as the Ashland Avenue stormwater upgrades, we had talked about adding pipe and drainage for some pump discharges and roof drains out within the right of way of Ashland Avenue to get some of the water away from the homes because of sinkholes. Taking a look, investigating that particular issue, I can tell you that in order for us to do an extensive evaluation, and I think council's heard this before, we would need to have both the sanitary laterals video inspected because all of those properties are about the same age and many of those laterals, I believe, are failing obviously at the same time because they were all constructed at the same time. This would not alleviate the problems with the sanitary sewer, but it certainly would reduce the amount of surface water that was getting into the areas where the joints are in all likelihood separating, causing those sinkholes. Another is the lighthouse hall upgrade where we talked previously about replacing the doors, replacing the floor in the gymnasium. The lighting on Don Marion Field, that would definitely need to have a sister project grant application, possibly with DCNR grant, which is due in April of 2021 because that project would cost us approximately $400,000. That is well over what typically county council will approve as a community development block grant. Some of the other projects that we've discussed, and I believe this is a rather important one, is the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. The ordinances date 1995 for the zoning ordinance and 2011 for the joint comprehensive plan with Ridley Township. Typically, your ordinances, at least your comprehensive plan, should be done every 10 years. So we're very out of date with both of those ordinances. I would suggest that that be strongly considered. The Chester Pike Master Plan, as you are aware, there is a group of municipalities that are now joined as the Chester Pike Improvements Partners. They are, their mission is to improve the entire corridor of Chester Pike. Although the borough did not have the funds to join that group initially, my suggestion would be to follow their path in doing a master plan for Chester Pike along the Eddie Stone border or through the Eddie Stone property. The other is the Route 291 intersection upgrade study that I believe would be something that we would do after we do the TCDI study that's being, hopefully going to be completed in the spring, summer of 2021. And then I always have a fallback, and that's the sanitary sewer rehabilitation. I'm not sure what specific area we would intend on doing that sanitary sewer rehabilitation. Eddie Stone Avenue was done this past year. And once we look at all of the complaints, we may find another area that we have decided is in need of some rehabilitation. The grant applications are due on the 6th of January at 4 o'clock, which doesn't give us much time to go ahead and do design work. We can certainly get the applications done. And the purpose of this hearing is to answer any questions and to get any feedback from any of the public who may be interested in giving feedback to council. So with that, I am going to ask if there's any questions of me, and I'm going to turn it back to the president of council.
Lisa, I have a question. The comprehensive plan, should that wait until we deal with the TCDI? That would be affected by what we do with that process as well, wouldn't it?
I think they can be done in conjunction. And the reason I say that is in the TCDI, what we're going to be looking at is land use and improvements that we would probably do an overlay district within that corridor. That's my thinking. We'll have a better idea once we have a consultant onboard to do that study. But that's what we're looking at right now. So it could be done. You would like to do your comprehensive plan before you do zoning, but I will tell you, your zoning ordinance is woefully in the rears as far as current standard.
Yeah, so I've heard. Excellent. Thank you.
Lisa, quick question. When you talk about the zoning ordinance, does that also include code? And would the community development block grant be eligible to, you know, do the upgrades that we had talked about with the ECOS 360 or a similar program of making sure that all of our codes are up to date and that they are available to everybody on an electronic basis?
I think, I believe, Mr. Stewart, you're talking about the codification of all of your ordinances, which is what you do with general code. I think we got a price, I want to say it was three, maybe four years ago. It was about, and I'm drawing a blank. I just saw it this afternoon, as a matter of fact. I want to say it was somewhere around $12,000 to have a reef codification done. Typically, you would get the ordinances updated first and then do a codification. Because at this point, if you were to put the old codes into the codification, then you would be having that, whether it's general code or somewhere else, redo your codification once you have the new ordinances. So my suggestion would be to get your zoning ordinance done and any of your other codes up to par and then go for the codification.
But is the codification process eligible for funding or not eligible for funding?
It is, however, it's not been very successful.
Councilors, are there any other questions that you would have to the borough engineer? And I do remind you that, you know, Lisa has provided some examples. If there's another project above and beyond what Lisa had mentioned, you know, certainly you can nominate or bring forward that project. And Ms. Catania can provide us a recommendation on whether or not that particular project would be eligible for funding. So at this time, is there any other questions or comments from council?
I have a question. Was the field completed with all its jobs that were supposed to be done for the drainage and stuff?
No, we've gotten as far as put the track or to redo the track, redress the track. However, we've not done any of the regrading, the infill regrading for Don Marion.
Thanks, Lisa.
I had another question, actually. Classify the work on Ashland Avenue as being anything urgent? Are we talking like people's houses are at stake here or?
Sorry. Would help if I unmute before I discuss something. What I have investigated, we've sent some of our inspectors out, is that there are several areas within Ashland Avenue that are having problems with sinkholes in their front yards. Most of those sinkholes are located within the areas of either extended roof drains to the curb line or their sanitary sewer cleanouts, which is why I was suggesting that we do a video inspection. Obviously, to do any of that, we have to have permission from the property owner because those laterals and roof extensions are private property. So at this point, it is something that we could pursue as part of this type of a project. My suggestion would be, however, that we look at that possibly as a PennVest project. PennVest is an infrastructure authority. It's a municipal authority, a state organization that provides grants and loans, low interest loans, grants, obviously grants, and loans. I believe right now it's 1.74, 1.75% interest for a loan over a 30-year period. I think that is probably better suited for the Ashland Avenue project because we're going to be able to investigate and as well do the work that's necessary to complete that project. The community development block grant is about $100,000. You might see some project that's about $150,000, but not the kind of money that we're going to need in order to complete that Ashland Avenue project.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Lisa, what about the 12th Street Alley, Ashland Alley? Remember, the residents were having, always hitting a bump before they get down to 12th Street?
I do remember that. And if you recall, I had taken a look at it. You know that I drive a car that is very low to the ground. If I go 15 miles an hour, I have no problem with that bump. I believe a lot of that is people that are racing. If we were to do something with that elevation of that alleyway, we would have to reconstruct the entire intersection and potentially get additional properties or additional easements from the property owners on either side of that alley in order to get that to a elevation that would be acceptable for a 25 or a 35 mile an hour speed limit.
Okay, thanks, Lisa.
I'm going to add those to the list just so that we have them, all right?
Thank you.
Council, any other questions prior to me opening it up the floor to the public? Not hearing any additional questions, TVG, at this time. If anybody from the public has any comments or any recommendations on community development block grant projects, now would be the time to bring them forward.
Hey, Bill? Hello?
Yes, sir.
Yes, this is Eugene Wiley, 1249. A question for you. I have a, I guess, an apartment owner right behind my house. And we had a really big problem with these lightning, lantern flies. Are we doing anything more to help the town? Because he cut down about four trees and he said it was all at his own expense. And one of them, he still left there because it was just too much money. Are we doing anything to help this coming summer?
Ms. Catania?
I believe that-
I'll yield that question to you of whether or not there's been anything that's been being done on a county basis to control the lantern flies.
I can't tell you because that's a health question. I'm sorry, Dawn. That's probably more in your alley. I can tell you that there are funds that are available through Tree Vitalize. We're having trees removed in one of my other municipalities, hopefully under a Tree Vitalize grant application. I believe this particular community development block grant hearing does not, the question doesn't apply to the grant. I'm going to defer that for probably later discussion.
So Eugene, just to circle back with what Ms. Catania said, we can certainly look into a Tree Vitalize grant, but it's not applicable to the community development block grant. It would be a separate endeavor.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Not hearing any public comment or any other public comment. Council, at this time, what's your pleasure in terms of moving two projects forward for our recommendation?
I think we should go for the comprehensive plan.
I like the lighthouse hall, getting the doors fixed so water doesn't go underneath the doors and getting the floors fixed for our kids. That's just my opinion.
I think we should do something for the residents down on the other end of 700 block of Ashland Avenue. We've been promising them for three or four years now.
That's true, too. There's the one with the sinkholes.
Yep.
And all the water in their basements.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. Lisa's saying there's a better way to approach that. Otherwise, that would have been the top of my list, too.
Oh, yeah. But, you know, it's been three or four years trying to help these people and it gets worse and worse with each homeowner.
Right. And the code and zoning needs to be brought up to date. We've been dragging our feet long enough for them, too.
Yeah.
Lisa, how do you think that the would be received for community development block grant funding for Ashland Avenue? Or do you think that's something that's better served as PennVest?
I believe that, well, I can tell you that there's money at PennVest. I can tell you that there is absolutely stormwater money at PennVest. I can't tell you whether or not there's sanitary sewer money and how competitive it is for the sanitary. We haven't done a sanitary recently. The other thing, and it's actually in my report, that there is another grant that DEP has. However, with all of the funding sources being up in the air because of COVID, the pandemic, and income for these kinds of programs, I'm not sure where we're going to be. So the best thing that I can tell you is that if Ashland Avenue is what everyone is suggesting, that we either choose to investigate it under the borough with borough funds and then go do an actual remediation plan that we could take to the county. I don't believe that they're going to allow us to do the investigation and the work in the same year, though. If you want to do the stormwater, that makes more sense at this point. That's why this was on here last year because it will at least alleviate some of that stormwater that's coming from the roof drains and from the homes themselves that aren't collected with the roof drains away from the areas that there are problems with what I believe is the joints for the sanitary laterals.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea.
We got to start somewhere.
Got to help them somehow. Would you have enough money to do lighthouse hall floors and doors and do the rainwater?
You can, you will have the opportunity to do a priority project and an alternate project. The one thing that I have heard through the grapevine is that county council is very interested in parks and community projects, which is why I think that one, when it was mentioned, if you saw me shaking my head, that's something that I believe county council is looking at doing, is improving quality of life. Any open space project, any park project. Because of the 2035, it's something that they're looking to move forward with. You know, we have that Greenways grant as well.
Right. That's a great idea.
Lisa, I know there was discussion previously that the USDA, there was a loan program sponsored by the USDA to do improvements to community buildings such as lighthouse hall. Is there a possibility of combining the opportunity of doing a community development block grant as well as submitting at the same time for USDA consideration, loan consideration?
Quite frankly, when we looked at that initially and we had the conversations with USDA, they were willing to look at it as partial grant and partial loan. Their loan rates are, were at 4.7, 4.8%, which in my world, you could actually float a bond cheaper than you would get that loan. So I'm not by any means the financial person, but the USDA grant, if it's not going to be our program, if it's not going to be all grant, may not be the best fit just from a payback standpoint. What we could do under the lighthouse hall is go for a community development block grant and try. We would have to do a feasibility study for lighthouse hall. If you recall, we were going to look at the DCNR grant for this particular project back in April of 2020. After having a site visit with the Southeast Regional Rep for DCNR, she advised that we would have to do the feasibility study before we would be eligible for any grant money with DCNR. So I think there's ways of getting around it, but we've got to, we have to start somewhere, whether it's with the community development block grant or we try to get some funding somewhere for the feasibility study, which also would be eligible under community development block grant so that we could then go to DCNR and ask for funding under that program.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Eddie Stone Lighthouse Hall, when your people came in to measure the floor and change out the doors, we were also talking about the kitchen because the kitchen, it's a total disaster. It's old. It needs to be repaired or fixed. Is there any chance that can get done along with the doors?
There's a chance that all of it can get done or a portion of it. You know, again, a lot of these projects are capped at $100,000. So when we start looking at adding scope, we may not be able to get it all done at the same time. So from a priority standpoint, the security is number one. So you're looking at the doors. And the second thing is your floor in the gymnasium because so many people utilize that gymnasium. So could it be done? Could the kitchen improvements be added to that? Yes, you would do it as an alternative in the contract. If it comes out to be too much money or during the design, we decide the cost estimate is higher than what kind of funding we have, then we just move on and say, all right, that's going to be a second phase or we're going to look for additional money elsewhere.
Well, what's wrong with the floor that has to come out? Because most kids, when they fall and crack their head on it, they get right up. Something else, it ain't going to be that way.
Well, you know, I look at it and if I were going to be doing the project, I would look at it as a whole because if you look straight up, a lot of the ceiling tiles are gone. So you have, it really should be a total renovation project.
I agree.
Which it may be worthwhile asking for the feasibility study for the community center, get that finished so that you can go for other funding because there's very few eligible programs out there.
Yeah, because the last time your people came in, they measured the floor, the kitchen, the doors, the exit signs, you know, different things that we need. We know about the ceiling tiles, but, you know, again, that's another big issue. That's a lot of money to take them down. You know, so. And then we had the air conditioner heater problem. They were all involved with it at one time, you know.
Right. And we still have the one HVAC system that has to be replaced.
Right.
It has not yet been replaced and that's 20 years old.
Right. And we should figure out some way of guarding that equipment outside because as you saw, we saw, they started cutting out the aluminum fins and everything else, you know, that's got to keep them kids out of there.
We actually, when we looked at that redesign, we actually talked about taking that unit and revamping the roof area so that we could put the equipment up in the roof area.
Right.
Which they wouldn't be able to climb on the fence, climb over the fence into the- Which we which they wouldn't be able to climb on the fence, climb over the fence into the area where the condensing units currently are.
Not too good.
So, you know, again, though, we've we've got to start somewhere. So if 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 you have the Ashland Avenue as one of your projects and the Lighthouse Hall feasibility study as your other, at least it's a start.
Right.
You have to take baby steps before you can run.
Lisa, how much is the feasibility study cost around?
From what I gather, somewhere around $28,000 to $30,000. And they'll go through not only what makes sense in the building, how do you revamp it financially? Can you maintain it? There's a whole whole list of things. We would do it to the DCNR standards so that we would qualify for for grant at a future date.
Right, right. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
So counsel, it sounds to me as if the consensus moving forward, it appears as if the projects would be the drainage improvements at the 700 block of Ashland Avenue and the feasibility study or the door replacement at Lighthouse Hall. Am I correct in that assessment?
I agree to that.
Yep. I'm good with that.
Me, too.
With that, Mr. President, you can close the hearing. The resolution is actually part of your agenda on your day meeting.
So counsel, it's which which one do you want to make number one? Which one do you want to make number two?
I think Ashland Avenue should be number one.
I agree.
Yes, that's right.
Lisa, what would be the preferred language for the Lighthouse project for the when we move it forward?
I I think you could just call the feasibility study for the rehabilitation of the Lighthouse Hall.
Okay, and then the other one, the first one would be what drainage improvements for?
Ashland Avenue.
Ashland Avenue, 700 block of Ashland Avenue.
What I'll do, I left those blank as well as the resolution number. So when we act on it tonight, I'll add those to the resolution. There's a standard template from from the county and get that over, and it can be signed. I'll need a copy of the minutes, the proof of publication for this hearing, as well as the the signed resolution as part of the application package.
So counsel, without any other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Community Development Block Grant for 2021, listing number one, our priority project as being the drainage improvements on the 700 block of Ashland Avenue. And project number two, which would be the alternate project, to be the feasibility study for rehabilitation of Lighthouse Hall. I'll entertain a motion.
I have to stand with Beth as a second.
Second.
And I have.
So I have a motion made in second. Any questions or count questions or comments from counsel prior to the call for action? No questions or comments, members of counsel, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Not hearing anybody oppose, the ma the motion will carry unanimously. Ms. Catania, any other business that we need to bring forth during the Community Development Block Grant hearing tonight?
No, I might suggest to to everyone to take a look at the Delaware County Office of Housing and Community Development. There is a new plan that has been presented for comments. It's part of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan for the County. It actually involves housing. That is going to be a subject that you're going to be hearing quite a bit about in the in the near future. I believe that as part of the application or the notification for the Community Development Block Grant, there was also a piece that came with that that's talking about housing incentives. So there's a lot of options out there. There's funding that's available to residents that are in need. So if if you just query Delaware County Planning Department, or excuse me, not Planning Department, Office of Housing and Community Development, it will come up. There's various programs for sanitary sewer for those that that are in need of of HVAC accessibility to their homes. So there's quite a few programs that I that believe that that would benefit some of the residents in Eddie Stone. That's all I have. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So counsel, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn the Community Development Block Hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, and we will adjourn the Community Development Block Grant Hearing at this time. Moving on to the regular council meeting for December 2020. Ms. Jones, at this time, we'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask you to do roll call, please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Sigda?
Here.
Councilwoman Gross?
Here.
Councilman Hartline?
Here.
President Stewart?
Here.
Vice President Yanazi?
Here.
Councilman Sprague?
Here.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Here.
Mayor Reeves?
Here.
Thank you.
I was advised that Ethel Guy would be leading us in prayer this evening. Ethel, are you on the line?
I am. I'm here. Are we ready?
We are ready for you to lead us in prayer, and then I believe you also have a an introduction of a another police chaplain, correct?
He was unable to be with us tonight. Reverend John Lafferty is the new pastor at Eddie Stone United Methodist. He's very anxious to get to know everyone, and I was talking to Chief Mashewski. We will be meeting, and he'll be here the next time. But he says greetings, and he's really anxious to meet everyone and learn about the community.
We look forward to meeting him as well, and thank you for joining us this evening to lead us in prayer prior to the start of our meeting.
Sure, let's bow in a moment of silence here. Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we praise you. We praise your holy name for bringing us together. We thank you for all the people who have gathered together. We come from many different places, many different walks of life, and many different ways of worshiping you, but we come in one purpose, and that is to serve the citizens of this borough, of this community, and to bring peace and justice to all our people. Be with us now. Be with those who are not able to be with us tonight. Bless our time together. We pray this together. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Jones, any announcements that we need to make prior to the to the start of our regular meeting?
No, not at this time.
Counsel, it's my understanding and discussions with the folks at Brinker Simpson that the county is still in the process of finalizing the reassessment. So until that process is 100% complete, we would not be able to approve the millages for our 2021 budget. So what that means is it would we will need to call for a special meeting prior to the end of the calendar year for the purposes of approving the 2021 budget, as well as the millages for real estate taxes and sewer. So at this time, I just want to make sure that everybody's calendar would be clear for a meeting the last week of December. Is this 28th, Monday, the 28th, would that work with a majority of counsel to have a special meeting to approve the budget on the 28th of December?
Mr. President, I believe they found the numbers from the reassessment, unless I'm mistaken.
Excuse me?
We were sent an email about an hour before the meeting with the the assessment number.
I believe that we were sent the email. It's just that the folks at Brinker Simpson have not had the opportunity to make sure that their calculations would be correct.
Ah, okay. In actuality, yes, I do.
Yeah, Chris, I just got them, and I just wanted to look at the budget and, you know, reaffirm that everything is accurate and also see if we can get the list of the properties and the assessments to make sure there's nothing missing or something doesn't seem inaccurate.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Did everybody on council get that email?
It should have. I just sent it late tonight, so let me see.
I know I've been away from the computer for about two, maybe three hours. I have not seen it as of yet, so.
Yeah, me either. That's why I was curious.
Yeah, it was. It was just sent at 5:09, but everybody on council should have received it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So counsel, prior to giving Ms. Jones the authority to advertise a special meeting for the purposes of approving the budget for 2021, would Monday, the 28th of December at 7 o'clock work for everybody? I'm hearing one yes. I'm not hearing an overwhelming yes.
Yes.
I'm available.
Yeah, it should work.
Also, at that same meeting of the 28th, I'd like to be able to set the calendar for next year. I know with the pandemic, we've gone to a virtual platform. We've eliminated the workshop meetings. I kind of want to get a general consensus of counsel, whether or not in 2021, you think it would be beneficial to continue to be working off of the virtual platform, which I think is a necessity, but to make sure that we we are meeting for our workshops as well as our regular council meeting. So I'd like to get a consensus of counsel on what your thoughts are with beginning to to meet in workshop in January.
I'm okay with it.
Thoughts of counsel?
Are you not doing any sessions anymore?
We've not been doing any e-sessions as of late.
Okay.
If we could please remind you to mute your phones or your computers.
Thanks, Tony.
Beginning in January, if it's the pleasure of the board, I'd like to go back to meeting in workshop on the first Monday of each month, and then making sure that we do have an e-session 6:00 PM prior to the regular council meeting on the second Monday of each month. Just want to make sure that that's the pleasure of counsel prior to Ms. Jones putting together the the calendar of meetings, which would have to be advertised in the Daily Times before the end of the calendar year.
Is that still? Mr. President, is that still going to be on Zoom?
We will still be following the Zoom platform for both workshop meetings as well as for regular council meetings for the foreseeable future.
All right, thank you.
Counsel will have a consensus that we could put a calendar together showing workshops and regular meetings for next year.
Sure.
I'm fine with it.
Yes.
Prior to the start of our regular meeting, is there anybody for public forum? Before I move forward, Stevie G, are you getting any indications from anybody that's on the call that anybody would like to address counsel and be a public forum?
Mr. Chairman, no hands raised.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jones, for discussion topics. I understand you're receiving a lot of right-to-know information at this time.
Yes, we are receiving. I've actually received 11 alone from John Lyman, the previous BCO. I'm working hand in hand with Peter Musso's legal right-to-know officer as to what can be released with the wording that comes in on the requests are not always what we have available. But all other right-to-knows have been satisfied.
Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, I lost signal there for a second.
Sure, yes. So the right-to-knows that are in, I received 11 from our previous Eddie Stone BCO, John Lyman pertaining to previous residential and commercial requests. So I'm working hand in hand with Peter Musso's right-to-know legal officer. So we will be hopefully wrapping them up soon. But yes, I did receive 11, five one week, and then six the following week. All other right-to-knows have been satisfied.
With discussions on the Forest Street Bridge, it sounds as if a majority of counsel is receptive to moving forward with entering into an agreement with the county to receive ownership of the Forest Street Bridge. Am I correct in making that statement?
Did that involve purchasing it or simply taking over responsibility for it?
I believe the purchase price would be somewhere in the neighborhood of a dollar. And if I remember the last discussion that we had. would be that the county would take a look at the last condition assessment and make one last round of improvements if necessary to improve the condition of that structure.
Why is it, are we giving it away?
It's not ours to give away. We're buying it.
Oh, okay. That's a mistake.
Well, when you buy it, you got to take care of all the repairs to it. We, we just got barely enough money to run the borough, how are we going to take care of a bridge?
We don't have enough money to run the borough.
And not only that, that happened with the, down there when the basketball courts was, they wanted to sell it to us for a dollar and all that. We're getting back in that same old game, buy this and you got tens and thousands of dollars of repairs, we don't have it. As far as I'm concerned, let the county deal with it. That's my opinion.
I agree.
I agree with you, Stan.
Enough is enough.
Other comments?
Mr. President, if I may, after, after our last meeting with the county, one of the things that I suggested to, to counsel is to approach the county, obviously, the, the previous meeting, which I was not part of, the county had talked about demolishing that bridge as part of relieving themselves of the duties of maintaining that bridge. And if they are planning on doing that, if we, if the borough initially, we had talked about using it as a pedestrian access only, the bridge rating is such that we could use it for emergency purposes if necessary. What I might suggest is to, to send a formal letter to the county. I had asked at the last meeting, what could the county do for us? But quite frankly, think that at a minimum, they should be able to provide to the borough not only upgrade to relieve the number threes and number fours on the priority list for the bridge, but as well the money that, that they use to maintain it annually and to demolish that, to which would help with your maintenance. Doesn't mean that years from now, you will still won't have, you'll still have monies that you're going to have to put towards that. But I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I don't know, I don't recall who exactly I had sent the email to, I sent it out to a few of the council members. But it is something that even if you're interested, just see what kind of number the, the county would, would put on it to revert it back to you, so for whatever that, that recommendation is worth.
Thanks for the info.
I like that idea.
We don't need one more bill.
Chris, I don't know if you've got a comment, I, I'm saying that you're I don't know if you're speaking or not speaking.
All I said was it's a good idea. It can't hurt us to investigate and find out what we can get out of it. I don't disagree with the rest of the council that taking on another liability is unwise, but if there's a way to offset that, I don't see any, I don't see any harm in investigating that and finding out what we can or can't pull off.
Lisa or Dawn, any additional comments about the streetlights at this time?
Not at this time, Chief and I spoke with Ron Fuller, I believe his name is, and he was getting the information and going to update the plan with the suggestions by Chief and myself on some areas that could use more lighting, but Lisa actually may have more.
One of the things that the council is going to have to do, and probably, Donna, this will probably come under you and I, is to approach PennDOT. Because you are planning on utilizing liquid fuels funds to pay down the loan under this procurement program, you do need to approach PennDOT Municipal Services. So I don't know whether it would be Marjorie Paris, who is, who is our regional advisor, or it, or the county advisor, or it would be her immediate supervisor who runs the municipal services department. We need to find that out, but we do need to approach them. I would hope that Ron can give us, could give us a number so that we could at least speak intelligently as to what kind of dollars we're talking about for payback.
I wasn't here for the talk about putting streetlights in, but I know for a fact.
Yeah, I agree, and I have to check with Christine because I, I thought she was reaching out to them, so I need to catch up with her too.
The streetlights need to, I would make a suggestion, we need to add some streetlights down at the football field where baseball was held, like in the alleyway. We've had a couple incidents where residents have called and I spoke to Chief Macheski where they broke down the fence because it was dark at night to go on the back of the railroad tracks and do whatever they were doing there. So, because it's so dark there, you can't see them, but they have broken the fence down at least twice. So having lighting back there would be a good deterrent.
I will make sure we relay that for you, Beth.
Thank you.
Chris, can you give us an update on the 291 task force, please?
Sure, I have reached out to the interested parties. I have a list if you're ready to, to vote on those, or I can submit that for next month, however you'd like to go about it.
I think it's on the agenda for later this evening, so if you're prepared to move forward with a list, we can do so at the appropriate time when we call for action items.
Okay, yeah, we're ready to go.
Vice President Udeze, I understand that there's been some upgrades to the website, and we are becoming more active on social media, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, we have an updated website, we advertised this meeting tonight on it. You can find the website at eddystonemorrow, B-O-R-O dot org. And I highly recommend all our residents, check it out.
Certainly want to give you some kudos, I was rather impressed with the, with the drone footage of the parade of fire trucks bringing Santa Claus around town for the toy giveaway.
Well, that was, we were going to have to send those kudos to Randy Perry with his drone footage, he's a, is a drone hobbyist, so recorded some of those, those videos and I, I was able to put them up there so people could see them. When the Christmas event was very successful. You know, it's been a hard year and we were able to get, provide some joy to the, the kids in town with a contactless toy giveaway this year. Next year, hopefully, we'll be able to go back to a, the, the normal tradition.
Any other information on the website or social media before we move forward?
No, but if anybody has any suggestions for anything that they would like to see on the website, please email me.
I'll solicit a comment or two from Brinker Simpson regarding the police pension audit.
You're on mute, Donna.
Did we get the final report from the police pension audit?
I attached it. No, Liquid Fuels.
It's the Liquid Fuels Fund, yeah.
Exactly what we had that we discussed before, where it was the $63,000 in interest.
Well, actually, so regarding the police pension fund, as of right now, we owe the police pension fund and the liability is recorded on the balance sheet about $345,000. And this is left over from the 2017 and 2018 pension that was not paid. And the interest that the borough has accrued because of that is really in excess of $100,000. So this year, we were able to pay $100,000 of the MMO down. So right now, with accrued interest through July, we owe about $344,000. So that's something that we're working in the budget to pay down each year. And I think as long as we are doing that, that the state is going to be comfortable with that scenario. So that was something that was unknown to us when we started back in June and actually TJ Anderson informed us of that probably in September and I almost, or yeah, in September and I think almost had a coronary. So moving, so then the police, the state had issued a pension report back in 2018. I don't know if we want to go back and talk about that, but I don't know if we need to. So recently, we just received the Liquid Fuels Audit for the period January 16, January 2016 through 12/31/19. And there were two negative opinions in that audit report, and I think it was attached, everybody should have received it. So there was a material weakness in internal controls that was found and non-compliance. So as a result of the audit, the general fund needs to reimburse the Liquid Fuels Fund about $8,200. So that's where we are with the Liquid Fuels Audit that was attached. So hopefully, we are not planning to have negative opinions for our next audit, for any audit really, so that's where we were. Did you want me to continue on with the treasures report?
Now, we'll hold on to the treasures report till we take action on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments or concerns.
Donna, I just want to thank you for getting everything back in order and all the hard work you've been putting in.
We're getting there. Yeah, thank you. We are getting there.
Action item, counsel, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our Zoom meeting held the 12th of November 2020.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made in second, and any questions or comments of counsel prior to taking action? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion will carry unanimously. This time is still while, if you can give us the treasures report for the month of November 2020.
Yeah, so everybody should have received the financial reports for November year-to-date. All the bank accounts are reconciled through November 2020. In November, there were 345,000 approximately of deposits received into the Sharon Bank General Fund and expenses of 378,000 were dispersed, including payroll of 117. So you should all have the transactions that flowed through the Sharon Bank General Fund. Purchasing, as I had indicated a few months ago, I would like to try and get a purchasing process in place where the purchase orders are coming through QuickBooks. However, I've kind of tabled that to clean up some other issues, including the outstanding payroll liabilities. So as you're well aware, there were outstanding payroll liabilities for years 2013 through March 31st, 2017, which I confirmed with Keystone Collections, they never received or were paid. So I finished uploading the files for 2013 through 2016. I just have to update the March 31st, 2017 report. And then also, the liability can be paid in January 2021, so I'm going to do that. In doing our reconciliations, getting ready for year-end, we became aware that there were two employees that had loans through the 457 Plan and we were making the payments for the loan, however, the payments were not being deducted from their pay. And this has been going on for a while, so we prepared an amortization schedule and I recommend that the employees who owe the money back to the borough, because basically the borough paid their loan, that we had them sign a promissory note agreeing to repay the amounts due in case they should leave the borough. So Christine is going to reach out to Peter regarding this, or I'll follow up with him later. But I want to get this moving so that the employees can pay that loan balance back. Also, I did talk to Paychex today and it looks like we're on track to move to their Paychex Flex system, which will happen for the February 25th payroll. So I will follow up with Nolan and Tina regarding the next steps with that. We'll address the budget at our meeting on December 28th or 20, yeah, 28th. Other than that, I don't really have anything else. You all received my report, if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. The one other thing I wanted to mention, and Dawn, I don't know if you mentioned this later, is that we did get approval for the TAN note. But I guess we can also cover that with the budget meeting on the 28th.
Yeah, so I was going to add it to tonight, but I figured we'd save it for the 28th.
Yeah, okay.
Counsel, at this time, entertain a motion to approve the treasures report.
So moved.
Any questions of Ms. Stillwell prior to the call for action? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm an aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Cash receipts and disbursement journal. Entertain a motion to deposit all monies and pay all bills.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously. Chief Lucheski, please report for the month of November, 2020.
Okay, please report for November, 2020. 325 calls for 3,338 for a year. 29 citations for 459. Seven accidents for 75. 16 thefts for 144, 79 parking tickets for 523. And 13 criminal arrests for a total of 152. My police report, I just want to touch a couple items here, Mr. President. First, I want to encourage residents to not hesitate, but to call 911 or report any suspicious or any criminal activity they detect, not to hesitate and just give us a call so we can.
We lost your chief, muted.
Sorry about that.
They didn't hear the other ambassador, Chad.
I just wanted to encourage residents to call the police when they see criminal activity or any suspicious conditions. A lot of people are hesitating to call the police because they really don't want to get involved. But everyone in this community needs to get involved to keep our community safe. Also, I'd like to thank the members of the rec board for getting Christmas together. I know the kids are really excited down there. And the fire department for safely escorting Santa Claus through town. And I thought that Santa Claus and his sleigh looked excellent this year, even though I didn't make it down to Borough Building. I did see some videos of it, it was very impressive. Some people may not know, but a few years ago, the police department started a rather small pantry to kind of help some residents in the community that need a little bit of help. Because of COVID-19 and also because of, you know, the recent social dynamics, that need has increased a lot to the point that we're having difficulty sustaining the pantry. So I reached out and I spoke to Rob Benuzzi and Dawn Jones, the borough manager, and we met with a second. We met with Karen Barnes and Lisa Riggins from Grant stepping up in Dennis's pantry. We were able to talk to them about getting some help for our pantry. And I'm pleased to say that last Saturday, myself and Ms. Jones, along with Nick Nicarelli and Community Trans, went to their facility and had, we loaded up over 30 boxes of perishable foods. We had boxes of non-perishable foods and some protein boxes. Community Transit, Community Transit transported it back to the municipality, and we were able to hand it out to the residents in a very short period of time. One of the things that we discussed after the fact was that we could do this for more residents. However, not all the residents knew that we were transporting the food back. So I'd like to encourage all residents to either register for code RED so you see the notifications or call the Borough Building and be put on the list, or we can assist you get on the code RED so that we can notify you that when we are fortunate enough to get this food supply in, we can hand it out to the residents. Also, I'd like to say to the community that we did receive a small grant from Walmart, an amount of $4,000. The grant was written with the intent to kind of improve the functionality of the Borough Building. It's a small amount of money, but utilize the money to replace some damaged doors, upgrade evidence room, and enhance some of the security features of the building. Thank you, Mr. President, that's the police report.
Thanks, Ed, for doing so many nice things, and Dawn, for our community.
Yes.
I have a question for the chief.
Yes.
Ed, where do we stand? Back in September, council had approved for you to get a new car for the police department. Have you received the car yet?
We haven't. That's the fact of the dealership. We were working back and forth. We originally ordered for 2020. We got delayed to 2021, and I still have not received the delivery date yet. We're working on that.
Okay, because we were supposed to get it in 2020, correct?
We were supposed to get it in the beginning of 2021. I'm sorry, in 2020, yes, you're correct.
Okay, can you let me know? You don't know any anticipated date and when you're going to receive it then, correct?
No, I do not, hopefully pretty soon.
Okay. Thanks, Ed.
Counsel, at this time, I'd like a motion to accept the police report for November, 2020.
So moved. Seconded.
Any other questions or comments to the chief prior to the call for action? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a representative from the fire company here to provide the fire report for November, 2020?
President Stewart, would you like me to read the report? I'll take that as a yes. Eddie Stone Fire Company, November, 2020, report. Total dispatch calls was 16, total alarms responded to 16, six during the day, nine at night. Automatic fire alarms were five, building fire, five, investigation, three. Motor vehicle accident, one, water rescue, one, assist EMS, two, calls in Eddie Stone, 10. Mutual aid assistance, two, Woodland, were three, Chester, one, Marcus Hook, one, Newcastle, Delaware, one. EMS, total dispatch calls, 34, two transport, 32 EMS incidents handled by mutual aid due to no staffing. Report submitted by Terry Burke.
No offense, but that EMS report's a disgrace.
I agree.
No staffing. Why was there no staffing, Mr. Stewart? Crickets again?
Not sure if we lost him. I actually don't see him on the screen. Let me check the other part.
Okay. Thanks, Dawn.
Yeah, I don't, I, we must have lost him because his name's not even on the screen.
Well, can you, do you know why, Dawn? Like, there was no staffing?
So, correct. Our problem has been we put out reminders. Unfortunately, we have them signing up through the night, but not during the day. Our hopes are to possibly hire more since several have left. But due to that Garcia Act, you know, many of them wanted to be hired as firefighters, but not for just the EMS. Unfortunately, we do have all day coverage this week. I believe it's Thursday and Friday with two of our normals, Ed Riley and Nick Torres. But unfortunately, yeah, we have no coverage.
Who's overseeing this? Are you overseeing this, Dawn?
I do oversee it, yes. I put out the reminders, but unfortunately, some will respond at the very last minute when they realize, you know, that they have the availability, they see maybe one other person on this schedule, and then sign up for it. And obviously, you know, we, we allow that. We will approve it. But again, we don't get the big notices like with, at the end of the month, when the next month is coming out. A lot of them are being paid more, working at other places with benefits.
This has always been the problem. Andy did it, Ed did it, scheduling, no one coming back and forth to answer it.
Bill, do you want me to keep on speaker?
I dropped the call, giving the login.
Excuse me, one moment. President Stewart apologizes, his call was dropped. He's trying to get back into the meeting as we speak.
Okay, I guess, Dawn, so do you go down when the people are working? I mean, I know you're not. You shouldn't have to babysit, but the people that are working night shift, are they down there sleeping the majority of the time?
So, um, no. It has been brought to my attention that many other surrounding fire stations, EMS providers, all have what they call a rest period. I have been somewhat vocal. The guys are aware that we have talked about it as long as you, if you are so-called resting and can get up and respond very quickly when that whistle goes off, then obviously, you know, we are somewhat aware of the situation that many of them are working multiple shifts, trying to cover several municipalities. So as long as our trucks get out, our people get saved, we're there as soon as possible. That is our biggest concern. We are fortunate that, you know, obviously, nothing like that has happened. But I have made it known that we do not want anybody taking the night shift solely to come there, take advantage and sleep. We do understand that there's a rest period for the people at night, as long as we've all gone back and forth with this, as long as they have covered their shift, meaning the ambulance is clean, it's fully stacked, all their duties are done. They have a sheet to check off on. We're all in agreement, as long as everybody can be taken care of as quickly as possible. That's what we're working on.
Okay, and who's responsible? These reports are always prepared by the chief, correct?
Correct, the report I just read?
Yes.
Yes, Terry Burke.
Okay, well, I don't know if you noticed or not, but he's got up here, the total alarms responded to were 16. Six by day and nine by night. Add it up, it looks like 15.
Correct, you are right.
And then if you add in, Dawn, if you add up all the numbers from where it says automatic fire alarm?
Yes.
All the way down to assist EMS?
Correct.
17.
So I did not want to change his report. I was simply reading it as he submitted it.
I'm not, I'm not being critical to you.
No, thank you.
Okay, I'm not being critical to you, it's just that because you only read the report.
Correct, yes.
If, if, if he were the one that did the report, I would be telling him.
Yep, and I understand. I'm, I'm not sure why he couldn't join us tonight. Mr. President Stewart, can you hear?
I can, I can hear.
Okay.
Having a difficult time hearing, but I can hear you.
Okay, so he is on. No, he's actually on speaker phone.
Oh, okay.
So until he can get back in via Zoom, I'm just going to keep him on speaker, if that's okay.
Oh, okay.
So Bill, there were some discrepancies in Terry Burke's report, but I read it exactly how it was handed to us. So at this time, if you'd like to make the motion, you're up. I just lost Bill on my phone.
His name's up on the computer.
Oh, maybe, maybe he's coming through it.
I'm back, I'm back in. So I heard there were some discrepancies with Terry Burke's report.
So the numbers were not adding up. Karen was nice enough to update on that, but I did, and, you know, she is aware that I was only reading his report that was handed in. I didn't want to make any changes to someone else's report, and she understood that. But we're now at the part where you would make the motion.
So considering that there's some discrepancies in our report, why don't we ask Mr. Burke to amend his report for November, and we will table any motion on accepting that report until our January meeting.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
Sure. President Stewart, just to let you know, next up is the BCO report, but we did skip over our engineer's report.
Yeah, I, I do apologize to Ms. Catania for skipping over the engineer's report. Why don't we give Ms. Catania the opportunity to deliver the engineer's report at this time? And then once she's complete with her engineer's report, she could follow up with the report of the BCO.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe everyone has a copy of my engineer's report. Mrs. Orsby, I'll get you a report tomorrow. I'll send it over to you. Usually, I get an email from her the next day asking, could I send it? The Community Development Block grant, 2020, we did get selection from the rec committee. We're working on that bid package. The 2021, we've taken care of this evening. The TCBI grant, I'm still waiting for, for a go-ahead. There's an approval and a contract that needs to come from DVR PC in order for us to get started. I'm glad to hear that we have the committee together. I, I have started an outline for the proposal that will go out to the consultants. So we're, we're moving forward, not as quickly as I was hoping, but we are moving forward with that. The Dunkin' Donuts, we received an email from the, from the attorney for, for Mr. Body requesting a meeting to discuss the status of, of the plans that were submitted. If, for those of you who may not have been part of, of that process, a preliminary land development approval was given to Mr. Body in 2017. So based on, on the municipality's planning code and the subdivision land development ordinance, they would need to start over. They'd like to have a meeting with, with the borough within that regard. Alliance, the, the record plans are signed. I don't know that the agreements are signed. I know everything was delivered today to the Borough Office for pickup to, or for Alliance to pick up. I don't know where we are in that process, but that is moving forward. I believe Alliance has submitted plans to the License and Inspections Department for review for, for the new buildings that they are proceeding. Industrial Highway LLC, there was a recommendation from the Planning Commission for conditional preliminary approval. At this point, however, I'd like to, to ask that counsel defer the decision until next month. That would require an extension by Industrial Highway LLC. The reason being that there are still very, very important issues that aren't resolved in order to give a preliminary approval. Once a preliminary approval is given, the developer has the right to build the plan per, per the preliminary approval. In speaking with, with members of, certain members of, of council, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Sprague, who's in charge of the Planning Commission, we thought that was the best method of getting everyone on the same page. Planning Commission felt that there was a need to move forward, however forward that was. Right now, in my opinion, in my professional opinion, that of, and that of Mr. Federico, who is the traffic consultant on this project that, that is working with Catania Engineering, we feel that there are public safety issues that need to be resolved prior to any preliminary approval. The RCAP, we haven't heard anything. I was under the impression we were going to hear something before the election. However, that didn't happen. I think because of COVID, the governor's office has pushed that back. I have no further information on that. We did today receive the roof contracts. So Colleen was putting those together this afternoon. We'll have those over to, to the Borough Office tomorrow so that they can be executed. We can give that contractor a notice to proceed to get that lower roof repaired and, and have the police not underwater, which will be a very good thing. Otherwise, I can, can. Otherwise, I can just report general progress and answer any questions anyone may have. I don't think there are any, so I'm going to move on to the BCO report. The report for the month of October 2020, building inspections, there were 16 inspections. Total cost of construction was $169,902. The permit fees were $5,657. There were no use-in-occupancy certificates issued in the month of October. No contractor's license issued. Code enforcement, there were 77, oh, excuse me, that's rental, I don't get the right one. Code enforcement, there were 12 notice of violations issued. Seven were weeds and grass, three were rubbish and garbage, and two were other, which were animal issues. We'll just leave it at that. And rental inspections, there were 77 units inspected. Fifty-two were new, for a total, this number is not right. Last time I checked, 77 and 52 is not 127. So I'll have Bill review this and amend it. We'll do the October and December, if that's okay? I should have looked at it before.
Oh, November.
That's the October report, Mayor.
Yeah, but you just said October and December, you didn't look at November.
No, 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 what I was saying is I was going to have Bill amend the rental inspection report because the number is incorrect.
Oh, okay.
And we'll discuss it in December. I don't want to have you approve something that's incorrect.
No, I understand what you're saying, Lisa, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I'm trying to go a little quicker so that we can move forward. The reports for the month of November, building inspections, there was a total of five applications reviewed, five permits were issued for the, in the amount of $217,598. The permit fees were $6,645. Use-in-occupancy certificates, there were three inspections, all three failed, so they'll be going for a reinspection. The code enforcement report, there were 12 notice of violations issued, and we have one open issue that has not been addressed. There was action, notice of violation was sent. Number of rental units, the total inspected was 140. There were 13 new inspections this month. Two units, oh, no, I'm sorry, all 13 failed. There were no contractor's licenses issued. Mr. President, I do believe that there are representatives from Industrial Highway on the call this evening. I'm going to leave that up to the solicitor because I did see that the attorney representing Industrial Highway is on the call. I just wanted to advise that there were members of that applicant on the call, from what I could see. I'm assuming they're still on?
Yes, they are.
It's a pleasure, Council. I mean, I guess if you're going to accept public comment on the engineers' report, you could let them speak, but I believe the engineers made the recommendation. Oh, well, I guess the question is whether or not they agree to the extension, is that right?
Correct.
All right, who's there for the, from Industrial Highway?
Vince Mancini's live.
So, Mr. Mancini, do you agree to an extension so that council can consider the resolution in January?
Well, I would just make a few comments before, and then I'll leave it to the principal of Industrial Highway LLC, Mr. Jeff Harper, who's also on the line with us. First, I would suggest that the Planning Commission, we've met with the Planning Commission on three separate occasions in 2020. And this December 3rd was the third review session. I think the issues that Mr. Al Federico raised regarding safety pertain to the access, southern access, which is again being reviewed by PennDOT, and basically that southern access was changed from a signalized situation. And it was reported that the borough did not want it, so we redesigned it to see, to have no signals, limit right and limited to left turn in and right turn in, but no left turnout, only a right turnout. And that was the basis, and I think PennDOT agreed with that because most of the accidents occurred with left turnout. And on the northern access, that is through the Exelon property, with through their easement and through the Conrail Crossing at that point, which is a secondary access, that is signalized. And we have submitted, you know, an improvement plan to Conrail and to PennDOT regarding that. And again, that's going to be within PennDOT jurisdiction. We have agreed to abide by the, you know, a condition that we obtained the PennDOT HOP as a part of, well, we had wanted preliminary final approval, but if the Planning Commission is recommending only preliminary, geez. If there are, if there are many conditions attached to it, which I think there are, you don't just get, you don't get the right to build out a preliminary plan approval subject to conditions until you satisfy those conditions. No more so than if you, you know, go to a preliminary final and you have a ton of conditions, you don't get to build that out until you satisfy those conditions. And, you know, so I don't, I don't understand why there is a need for a further continuance. My client had hoped to get into the ground in 2021, but that assumed if we had gotten a preliminary final. If we're going just for preliminary here, we have to start all over again with a final plan application. So I'm not even sure we would make it in 2001. So I would ask the council to consider whether or not they would entertain the preliminary, at least a recommendation for preliminary approval from the Planning Commission.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mancini, but you can imagine council's reluctant to go against the recommendation of its engineer. And I think the engineer would just like some time. I mean, I understand the engineer was not brought into the crafting of this resolution, and so it just makes sense for her to take some time to review it before she can recommend it to council.
Number one, the resolution that was crafted, was crafted as a Planning Commission recommendation, I believe.
Yes.
It's, it was going to be signed by the chairman of the Planning Commission, and it wasn't presented at any point in time in order to be on the agenda this evening because we received it this afternoon. That being said, I'd like to offer some comments that I received from Al Federico, even as of today. For example, the comment about the right turn in, right turnout. When they met in, the Planning Commission met with the applicant in November, it was discussed that the southern entrance would be a right turn in, right turn out. The plans that came in were actually for a left turn and a right turn in, right turn out of the site. That being said, what was asked was, the warrants on the study, on the traffic study, stated that there was warrant for left turn lanes. However, there's no left turn lanes on this plan. And there's nothing other than a comment that they couldn't be met. We have nothing in any, we have no proof that that can't be done. These are the types of things that we'd rather sit down with the applicant, go over so that once and for all, we're all on the same page. With that being said, there was discussion at the Planning Commission meeting about emergency access. This applicant has chosen for the borough to go to Alliance and tell Alliance that they need to change their plans, their land development plan in order for them to utilize Alliance's property for an emergency access. That's something that the applicant should be doing with Alliance, not the borough being involved. As far as the traffic signalization, that was never brought to the borough. I was quite surprised, and I actually responded to an email that I saw from PennDOT stating that the borough was not interested in a traffic signal at that southern exit. The reality is that PennDOT wanted to close the southern entrance or the northern entrance because both intersections were not warranted as far as signalization. So there's just too many things that, right now, we don't have solid answers on to have a preliminary approval.
If it may please the council, as far as the left turnout goes, I think that was submitted to PennDOT, and I believe they had no issues with that because that is not where the accident history linked to. It was the, it was a left turn, I'm sorry, the left turn in was not the accident history. It was the left turnout, and that is precluded. And secondly, it's going to be subject to PennDOT's final say. As far as the Alliance goes, we made it clear that we have, we are willing and we have provided plans to show a traversable area for emergency vehicles that connects from the Alliance boundary line to the Exelon boundary line. So our problem, you know, we're doing our share. We can't, we can't, you know, force Alliance to do anything they don't want to do. And without Alliance, you don't have an emergency access. As far as the rating, my, I know our, my client, Jeff, has spoken with Alliance, and they submitted plans to Alliance, and we are reaching out to them. But again, we can't, we can't force them to do anything. I just learned that when the borough approved their plans, there was no condition or contingency imposed for them to provide for, you know, an emergency access. So to say, hey, we got to do it, I don't know how that's going to get done unless Alliance wants to cooperate. As far as PennDOT wanting to close, you know, the northbound or southbound, I was not present at those discussions, but I don't believe that PennDOT ever came up and said, hey, we're going to close this or close that. If it was discussions, it was principal discussions, that's all. We are currently before PennDOT. They will review it, they will act, one way or the other. And if we are conditioned on getting a PennDOT permit, I don't see where we're creating any issues for the borough. I mean, we backed away from the traffic light because we were told the borough didn't want to have the obligation and maintenance and cost of maintaining that traffic light. The rest is, you know, is strictly between us and PennDOT. But again, if council prefers to not decide this evening, I'll turn it over to my client, and he can make the decision as to the extension or not.
I mean, again, this is a resolution that was prepared for our Planning Commission, not for council, and we just want it today. So, I mean, I, you know, if you're not going to agree to the extension, then I guess we could take some action, it's fine.
I didn't say I wasn't going to agree, I was just making a point. And if you can give me a moment, I'll try to contact my client and immediately get back to you. Is that acceptable?
So you're going to call your client now, is that it?
Yes.
All right, I mean, we can move on, we'll double back, let us know when you hear it back.
No way. No way.
Something for nothing.
Yeah, yeah, he's not being truthful. I go at least in a planning committee, I'm sorry, that is exactly how I feel.
Appreciate that, Councilman Groza, just let Mr. Mancini contact his client, and he just has to agree to that.
Good luck.
All right, we can go on to the next item, and we'll wait back there for Mr. Mancini. I'm certainly, you know, hopefully he'll agree to the extension, otherwise it's difficult for council to act against the advice of its engineer.
Is that where they want to put the pot plant or the growing facility?
Ms. Catania, you know what it's about, this property?
I do not. Right now, it's a warehouse, is how it's being presented.
Will we have any knowledge of what they're going to put in that warehouse as a borough?
At some point in time, when they put application in for building permits, they're going to have to, or use an occupancy permit, they would have to advise what the, what the use of the building would be.
And we have the opportunity to say yea or nay?
If it meets zoning, you don't have the opportunity to say yea or nay.
Okay.
President Stewart.
Yeah, Ms. Jones, where are we at on the agenda, I believe?
Okay, yeah, right.
Mr. Mancini's back, Mr. Mancini, what, sorry, what'd you hear from your client?
That's fine, the extension is granted.
We appreciate it. So the applicant has agreed to an extension to our January meeting, and I'm sure...
I will send you, I'll send you a confirmatory email tomorrow.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and we'll have a chance to review it.
If you would, can we set up, we'd like to set up a meeting so that we can track out what needs to get hashed out and get this thing completed.
Okay. Where can, Lisa, when do you want to meet and where? Or do we meet virtually?
Depending on how many people, we could do it in my office, or we could do partially virtual, if that's, if that's better for everyone. It's a, I guess it's a, what depends when it is, I guess.
Yeah. I, from our end, I gather, I'm going to have Jeff, Paul Hughes, who's our project engineer, Matt Shittin, who is our traffic consultant from, so the same firm as Paul.
Right.
And possibly our project manager, Tony Poole. And from your end, we would expect who?
Mike, I don't know who from the borough will be there. I'm assuming probably Councilman Sprague, but I'll let him speak for himself. It would be my, it would be myself, Al Federico. And I assume Ms. Jones, she typically would be there, Mr. Amuso.
I can be there.
Okay.
And Mr. Mancini, while you were off making your phone call, a couple of our council members were questioning, what type of business will be run out of this warehouse?
Warehousing, that's already been clearly stipulated.
Like warehouse, okay, just like transport in, transport out?
No retail, no wholesale, no sales activities on the site.
No marijuana?
No marijuana.
Okay, okay. It was brought to our attention, we wanted, we needed to ask and clarify it, so. Thank you, Mr. Mancini.
Yep, thanks, Dawn.
Yep.
Ms. Jones, I believe we still need to take action on the BCO report, correct?
We do, for the month of November, President Stewart, please.
So council, I'll entertain a motion to accept the BCO report for the month of November, 2020.
Seconded.
Motion made in second, any questions to Ms. Catania prior to the call for action? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Health inspectors report for November, Ms. Jones.
Yes, November 2020 health report, 1200 East Ninth Street, Street Department, inspections all up to date as of now by... Yes, November 2020 health report. 1200 East 9th Street, Street Department inspections, all up to date as of now by our BCO. Health inspections to be done for Del Monte and Chocolate Factory this week. Um, I'm sorry, upcoming. That was in November. They're actually scheduled for this week though. Health training with state for reports and re-inspections has been done. Rental inspections, payments continue to come in. Second notices have gone out. Concerns growing due to complaints that they have only paid in the past and never had to actually have people come in with the inspections. Several are questioning our inspector when he goes in. I just like to relay this information so we're all on the same page. All large apartment buildings have been inspected. Repairs have been re-inspected. That's for the month of 2020. Thank you.
Counsel, at this time, I entertain a motion to accept the health inspectors' report for November 2020.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Uh, any questions or comments to the report prior to the call for action? Not hearing any comments or questions. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any member of council opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash 14, which is the resolution containing our two projects nominated for community development block grant funding, as discussed earlier. You know what, Don? We already took action on this at the hearing, correct?
We did, but you noticed it then. So I still have, um, Beth Gross is the first and Stan Sigda as the second, which was earlier and earlier, um, so. All good.
We're all good. We don't need to take action, right?
Correct.
Counsel, earlier this evening, the Civil Service Commission met, uh, to verify the, uh, documents associated with the full-time appointment of Robert Pugh. Civil Service Commission took the opportunity to review not only the conditional letter of employment that was sent to Mr. Pugh, but also the, uh, completed documents, uh, from our medical evaluation, which found that Mr. Pugh is fit for duty, as well as the psychological evaluation. They found that Mr. Pugh was psychologically fit to, um, serve as a full-time patrol officer. Considering that he has met all of the conditions, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Robert Pugh as a full-time patrol officer with the Borough of Eddie Stone.
Don't move. Seconded.
Counsel, any questions prior to the call for action? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? I believe that the, uh, mayor has set up a small ceremony for Mr. Pugh to swear him in tomorrow. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes, tomorrow morning, nine o'clock.
Considering our earlier discussion, the next action item would be to, uh, take action on the Industrial Highway LLC, uh, which the owners of that property has agreed to an extension until next month. So there'll be no need to take that action at this time. Mr. Yanuzzi, I believe that the, uh, you've been working with the rec committee on, uh, identifying a, uh, refrigerator for the, uh, Lighthouse Hall.
Uh, yep. They need a new, uh, light, or, uh, they need a new refrigerator and, uh, the total cost of the refrigerator, uh, without shipping will be 1,000, give me one second here. 1,668.92, uh, but with, uh, shipping from, uh, restaurantsupply.com, uh, all the information is attached. They need a new refrigerator for the snack bar in Lighthouse Hall.
Is that a, uh, commercial upgraded, uh, refrigerator?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. That'll fit where the old one is?
Uh, yep, that looks.
I'm just asking, was it the space limited down there? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we have, uh, uh, all right, the, the, it's the same size as the refrigerator that is in there.
Okay.
If, if I may, uh, prior to doing, to actually ordering that or at the same time you order, if you would contact the Pico Smart Ideas, let them know that the borough is buying a new refrigerator. You'll get monies back from, from, as a rebate from, from Pico. But you'll need to do that either at the same time or before you order.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a commercial refrigerator for Lighthouse Hall.
So ordered.
Seconded.
Members of council, does anybody have any questions prior to calling for the action? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Counsel, as everyone had an opportunity to read the addendum to the employment agreement for Ms. Jones, our borough manager.
Yes.
No.
No? When did that come through?
It came through with the updated agenda. Along with several other items that were later in the day. We were going to include the tax note and all of that. There's the resolution for the tax and then the tan note, but then we took them off, um, to wait for the special meeting. Did we lose Bill again? I'm calling him now.
He's back on.
Oh, okay.
I lost the connection for a minute.
Uh, so.
Am I back? Am I back connected?
Yes, you are back.
Sorry, I think I blurred it out for a second. Did anybody besides Ms. Reeves not have an opportunity to review the, uh, addendum to the employment agreement?
I didn't get, I haven't read it, Bill.
I haven't read it, Bill.
Can you read it, Bill, and enlighten us on what it says?
I will give you an overview, absolutely. The supplemental terms and I believe that was in her original agreement, which I was mistaken, is, is to, uh, make a provision, uh, to provide the borough manager with a stipend for her cell phone usage. That cell phone stipend would be $50 per month, which is in line with what, uh, other members of council receive for cell phone stipends. Um, since, uh, it was not in her original agreement, there would be a one-time payment of $500 for the, uh, past year's worth of cell phone. And then moving forward, she'd be paid on a monthly basis, $50 a month, uh, for her cell phone. The other supplement is in regards to accrual of a vacation time. Uh, basically it caps the amount of vacation time that the borough manager can accrue, uh, to 40 days maximum. And that at the end of the calendar year, any days that are accrued beyond 40 days would be paid out on a per diem basis, which I believe is in the best interest of the borough. Just so that we're not keeping a lot of time on the books uh, for the borough manager. And I believe the last supplement is regarding attorney fees. And in the event that either party is required to retain services of an attorney to enforce the terms and conditions of the agreement.
That's, that's, that's just a standard part of the.
That's your standard?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that was included in the agreements. That just means for the amendment as well. The only two additional benefits are the ones you've already described.
Okay. Any comments of council regarding those two?
What was, what was the bit about the attorney fees?
So, Ms. Reeves, in the regular agreement as well, it says that in the event that either party is required to retain the services of an attorney with force the terms and conditions, the prevailing party gets attorney's fees and costs. So that means if council, you know, just says, forget it, we're not honoring this agreement and Ms. Jones has to get a lawyer to sue over it and she ends up winning, then we'd have to pay for her attorney's fees and vice versa. If she were to ignore some provision, then we'd have to, to, to file a suit. That was in her original agreement and so it just carries over to this amendment.
That would only be attorney fees pertaining to Eddie Stone, correct?
Right. I mean, if there's some kind of violation of the agreement.
It'd only be attorney fees that are associated with the enforcement of the.
This particular agreement, yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, as far as, as far as uh, carrying over vacation time, I don't believe any of our other employees are permitted to carry vacation time over. I would say no to that, that she should be compelled to be on the same level as everyone else.
I believe your employee handbook does have a provision to allow the employee to carry over two times their annual. Is that not correct, Ms. Reeves? I know you wrote the employee handbook.
Bill, you sat up there for eight years on council too. You should know these things. I'm not answering any more of your questions.
I was just trying to confirm or deny whether or not you, you made the statement that no, no other employee is allowed to carry vacation time. And I believe that is not correct in accordance with the employee handbook.
It's not like I have the employee handbook in front of me.
I don't have the employee handbook, which is. Able to find out for sure.
And table the next month. I want to see the hand, I, I really got a handbook.
There's a motion to, to table, uh, so we need to, to vote on that. Uh, so a motion, vote to ayes to table it, vote to nays to not table it and vote on this tonight. So can we have a roll call on the motion, Councilman Stigmas, motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table it.
No, I, I know there's been one.
Second.
Great.
So you got a motion made, that made the table.
Right.
Ms. Jones, you want to do a roll call on whether or not we table the addendum?
Councilman Sigda.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gross.
Yes, I've never received an employee handbook, first of all. If I could get one, that'd be great.
Councilman Hartline.
Yes.
President Stewart.
No.
Vice President Yanuzzi.
No.
Councilman Sprague.
Well.
Councilwoman Reeves.
Yes.
And the motion to table carries, uh, we'll consider.
Four to three.
Yeah.
No worries. Between now and next month, uh, we'll make sure that Ms. Gross and, uh, anybody else who has not had an opportunity to receive an employee handbook, uh, receives an employee handbook.
Thank you.
I believe the last action item in front of council this evening, uh, is the approval of the 291 Task Force Committee. At this time, I'll yield the floor to Mr. Sprague, uh, who can, uh, provide us with the, uh, members of the task force who have agreed to, to serve the borough.
Yes, uh, so I approached, uh, I believe nine people total. Those who are agreed are as follows. Uh, representing the planning commission, Dave Bennett. Representing Delaware County Planning, Tom Schaper. Representing the businesses along 291, uh, Max Ryan of Alliance, Jeff Harper of Industrial Highway LLC, and Jim McCormick of Reese Steel. Representing the citizens of the borough, uh, Richard Mohler and Wendell Wimbush.
Chris, what was the last thing, hon?
I'm sorry, what was that? The, the two people?
The last name, Chris, please.
Uh, Wendell Wimbush.
Wendell.
Wimbush. W-I-N-B-U.
Thanks, Chris.
No problem.
Mr. Sprague, it sounds as if you've got a very nice cross-section of individuals to serve on your task force.
Thank you, President. I did my best.
Oh, yeah. Will you also be serving on the task force as a member of council?
Uh, if that is council's pleasure, I would be happy to do so.
I would, uh, as president of council, I would prefer that at least one member of the board, uh, also serve on the task force. And if you'd be willing to do so.
Yeah, it would be my pleasure.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion of council to approve the 291 Task Force Committee as, uh, presented by Mr. Sprague.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions of Mr. Sprague regarding any of his selections to serve on the task force?
Nice job, Chris.
Hey, great job, Chris.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments prior to the call for action? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any other action items that need to be brought forth in front of council this evening? Not hearing any. All of, uh, I entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Can I say something, Bill?
Absolutely.
Okay, first off, I would really like to commend President Stewart. And I'm going to tell you why, Bill. Back in January, when you took over the presidency, you told council, when you hired all your new people, you told, you told the audience and ca- council, sitting council, that in six months, you wouldn't recognize Eddie Stone. Eddie Stone is so deplorable. There's trash everywhere. You're absolutely right. You lived up to what you said, Bill. You don't, you can't recognize Eddie Stone.
He said by March.
By March? Okay. Well, I was wrong. I thought he said in six months' time.
Yeah, take a look in my alley. You can see the work that's been done. Look in my alley. It's a disgrace.
The whole town's a disgrace.
Mr. Stewart, I have something to say, if I may, please.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I would just like to let, let everybody know that, um, during the Thanksgiving holiday, police officers, uh, were able to, uh, sta- get, um, 12 turkeys, um, donated. And the guys from the police department did donate enough money and all for the rest of the fixings where 12 families in town did receive a Thanksgiving turkey compliments of the police department. I would like to thank the officers for doing that.
Absolutely.
I'd also like to, uh, wish everybody a nice holiday season too.
Same to you. Blessings to all of you.
Very good.
Happy holidays that he's done.
Yep. To all at Eddie Stone, wishing you the best for the holidays and a happy new year.
President Stewart, if we're extending the meeting, if I could have a minute, please?
You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I, I'm just now realizing this is our last meeting of the year, so I would just like to thank all of our new professional services people. New and old, thank you to Contagion, Catania Engineering. Thank you for the great job done by Brinker Simpson, taking over halfway through the year. And especially, I'm sorry, Mr. Amuso and his firm have done a fantastic job and especially Dawn Jones has just done a tremendous job this year. Everybody's, our, our beloved fire marshal the other day, Bob Gleam, said to me, Dawn Jones is the best thing that's ever happened to this town and I could not agree with him more.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other comments before we adjourn?
Thank you.
Safe out there.
Merry Christmas all.
You too, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Peter.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Be safe.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you the end of December.
Yeah.
Yes.
On the 28th. Okay, take care.
Bye.
Good night.
Thank you, Chris.
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Seconded.
Good night.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you, Stevie J. Merry Christmas, Steve.